I get seven o'clock.
All set?
Yep.
All set? Rog, Marlene?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Welcome to the City of Manistee Planning Commission meeting for February 2nd, 2023. Time now is 7:01. Please rise for the pledge. 7:01.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Here.
Commissioner Samansky? Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mamberto? Commissioner McBride?
Here.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time the Planning Commission can take action to approve the February 2nd, 2023 agenda. There are motion? I'll make the motion. Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
Pam, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest, is there any commissioner with any, has any conflicts of what's on the agenda?
Commissioner, on the Maple Street project, I was the surveyor involved with the landscape, about the original layout of the, defining the existing conditions. Beyond that, it was out of my reach.
Katie, can you hear me?
Yeah, oh, hold on, sorry. Yes, Heather, I can hear you now.
Okay, so I've got my phone, there's probably going to be an echo.
You sound good right now.
Okay, so I will have somebody for public comment.
Okay.
When, so just unmute, or, yeah, unmute, you'll want to keep yours unmuted so she can hear.
Okay, I'll keep, I'll keep mine unmuted, sounds good.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, the same, I did the original survey of the parcel, the existing conditions that are there, everything they've done after that, I have no idea what they were doing on that, so.
Katie? Is that, there, there isn't any conflict then?
Um, that would be up to the commission, but I, I would not think so.
No.
It was pretty administrative, and I think it's appropriate that you disclose that you were the surveyor for the property.
Oh, yeah. What do you have?
I don't have a problem with that.
Marlene? Pam?
Have a roll.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob.
Approval of minutes, at this time the Planning Commission can approve the January 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Marlene, second.
I'll second.
Roger. Discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondence, correspondence has been shared with the Planning Commission and will not be read aloud. So, Jeff McCula, Director of DPW, Jeff here.
Grabbing out tonight.
Oh, Jeff. Darn.
That's all right, that's all right.
Okay, and then we'll move to Tracy Davis, Housing Coordinator.
Hi, everyone. So I have met some of you, I think, at maybe our last meeting, or some of the other meetings that we've been in, but I'm Tracy Davis, I'm the new Housing Coordinator, the Housing Ready Coordinator, for Housing North, located in Manistee County. So I, I grew up in Manistee County, and have recently returned a couple years ago with my daughters, so that they have an opportunity to live here and work and see all the great things that Northern Michigan and Manistee County has to offer. So I'm really excited to be here, and to talk a little bit first about Housing North and what we are, and then a little bit further about the position that I'm currently working in. So Housing North is a nonprofit organization that serves 10 counties in Northern Michigan, and we're really focusing on three different pillars. And we're, and we stay really laser focused on these three areas, which are awareness about housing and housing needs, building capacity and providing resources, and then awareness about housing. So our mission is to influence policy, whether it is on a statewide basis or in local communities, build awareness about housing, and then expand the capacity that local units of government have, so that they can develop housing solutions to meet their, each, each community's unique needs. So there was a study done in 2019, and you may have heard that Manistee is in need of approximately 1,000 new housing units. And when you break that down, and, and the housing units would be comprised of both rentals and housing, single-family housing units. So we need 582 new rental units that are priced at or below $1,000, and 323 homes priced at $200,000 and below, so not above that range, below.
How many homes?
323 new homes. So just to give you a little background about our population in Manistee County, if you don't have the newest information, 40% of our population in our county is asset limited, income constrained, working individuals, employed individuals. So those are the ALIS population. And what that really means is individuals, households are struggling, even though they're employed, they're struggling to meet the basic needs of their household, which include things like transportation, healthcare, food, and of course, housing. So when we look at housing across the nation, across the state, the rule of thumb is that someone shouldn't be spending more than 30% of their household income on housing. In Manistee County, 50% of our population is spending at least, at the very least, 30% or more of their income on housing. So I'm going to talk a little bit further about what our population also looks like, just so that we can kind of know who we're talking about. And then I also want to talk about clarifying some terms that you hear a lot when people are talking about housing. So one is affordable housing, you hear that term a lot. That really refers to subsidized housing, people that may be using vouchers or be in supported living environments. You may have heard it in the past referred to as Section 8 housing. Attainable housing, which is another section, and a lot of times it's interchangeable with workforce housing, or the new term that's used a lot is missing middle housing. And these are for individuals who don't qualify for any subsidy in housing and, and don't want any subsidy. They're, usually it's 80 to 120% of the AMI, that's average median income. And in our county, the average median income for a three-person household, for example, is $53,488, or $25.72. So depending on your household size, that changes what your, the average median income is. So it may go up to, I think it's close to $64,000 in our county for the AMI. So to talk a little bit further about what a housing ready community is, housing ready position, I wanted to explain that a little bit. So when we talk about housing ready, that really means communities that have removed obstacles in their county to support the, what housing needs that they have for their population. It is counties and communities that have looked at their zoning and revisited that zoning, because a lot of zoning may not be applicable any longer, especially to, to support the growth of housing. It also means that it's a community that has a plan for housing growth. And I work with the Manistee County Housing Action Team, or they like to refer to themselves as the HAT, which is made up of government leaders from our community. It's agencies that work with housing, whether it be to support individuals in, in those housing units, or developers for housing, as well as any other stakeholders that are interested in housing. And they really lead the priorities for what they want to see for our community in terms of housing, and the work that they're asking me to do. So this isn't things that I've decided are best for our community. It's what the city manager, the county commissioners, individuals that are elected leaders that are determining how we're moving forward. And we really had a plan that was from 2019, that is our Housing Action Plan. And I'm, I'm happy to share that plan with you, it is a very large document. And I also have some other resources that I would love to share that I, I think can come through Katie, if you're interested in them. So some of the things that, that I work on are really helping provide some of that capacity, because a lot of times you'll hear that we want to do something, but there's just not the staff to be able to do that. I can help with that, I have a lot of different resources, a lot of data-driven information specific to our county, as well as practices that are best practices from across the state, as well as across the nation in terms of housing. I also help look for local funding sources, put together resources. And one of the things that you'll see and hear me talk about is the Housing Checklist. And that's one of the things I'd like to be able to send again to you through Katie, which is again a large, multi-page document. And it looks at things to help remove those barriers in our area for housing. And it may not seem like this small thing on a checklist really moves the needle forward, but collectively, when you do a lot of these things, or some of these things, you don't have to do all of them, it's what works for you and your community. When you do these things, it helps loosen up and spurs housing in your area and the growth of housing. So we can provide that tool to help walk through and guide you on, based on what you want to do in, in this area. So that's something else I, I'd like to share. So talking a little bit further about that group of housing that I talked about, that workforce housing, that missing middle, attainable housing. We said that the AMI, $53,000 for a two or three-person household, individuals in that category are people with jobs. They may be first-time homebuyers, they're college educated, they maybe young, have young families, they may be paying for childcare, they may be retired individuals. But that, that's the majority, or a large portion of the people in our county, including a lot of people probably in this room, myself included. And that's the impact, that group that we want to be looking at for housing. And how can we meet those needs? Because there are a lot of individuals in our community that have left or aren't accepting positions in our community because there's a lack of housing. So, and some of those people that recently have, and the employers have been stopping me since I've taken the position, coworkers have stopped me and said people have left, and we're talking about professionals, accounting individuals, people that are engineers that won't accept a position here. So these are professional individuals that help grow and help our community thrive. So we're not, not able, as we are right now, to receive those, those, that talent in our community. And what that will end up translating to is we won't have teachers to be able to educate our students. We won't have servers in your favorite restaurants that you go to, or cashiers, because they can't, they'll be forced out of this area for housing. And we won't have EMTs that keep us safe. So that's some of the things that we really want to be looking at and thinking at, collectively, our community, how we can make an impact and move that housing needle forward. And again, this isn't, the Housing Checklist, for example, isn't going to solve the whole world, but it will help position us to be able to move forward. And I was recently, actually this week, on a webinar from the Michigan Association of Planners that really had a great webinar about zoning reform. And it really dug deep into why we need to look at zoning that has been on the books and think about how to address our housing needs. And again, I'm, I have access to the slides as well as the webinar, and I would love to share that with Katie, so that she could share that with you, if you're interested in seeing that. But that kind of explains some of the why, which is quite long-winded, about why we need to be doing some of the things that we need to be looking at, how, zoning for. So I also have a lot of great information on our seasonal population in Manistee County in particular, and the impacts of seasonal population, as well as I heard at the last meeting, the last Planning Committee meeting, a number of constituents brought up short-term rentals. I have tons and tons of information and hard data about short-term rentals specifically in our community, and resources for speakers, and information that could assist if we want to have that conversation again. So I think, other than that, I was just going to share my contact information, I think. I've not used this before, but.
I can zoom in.
Can you get it up here?
Yeah. A little too far.
Here we go. It always, yeah. Yeah. So here's my contact information. And some of the data that I've mentioned, our Housing Checklist, information about the short-term rentals, all that stuff is on our website for Housing North. Sometimes it's a lot of digging, so I can make it easy for everyone and share that information, and would be happy to do that. I think that's it. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions?
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Go ahead, Roger.
A bit of mind, young lady, how come you waited so long to come up with this housing need that you knew we had years ago? Why did, why didn't we start this two years ago?
Well, they did begin in 2019, a group, there was a grant, this is before I was here.
Yeah.
With Rising Tide, so the city actually had, was an outside independent consultant that came and did some analysis, some deep analysis. Those are how the Housing Action Plan, that's a part, has been incorporated a part of that plan. And the city council actually agree, made a resolution and passed that they accepted that information in 2019. So they just haven't had the capacity, prior to me being here, to work through some of those things on the plan.
So you're here to work through them?
To try to work through them, yes.
So how long is your organization plan on staying here?
Well, I'm funded here in Manistee County for the next three years.
Oh, three years?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's.
I mean, I'm, we're happy, I'm happy to stay much longer. I, I live here, I grew up here, my family's here. So I would like to stay here and, and continue that.
I'd like to have you here, but how do we get to housing now, you, are, who contacts the developer? I mean, do you know how many houses we have online?
Online?
That we have, that we have approved at this point?
Do you mean for, for short-term rentals, or?
Well, let's say for an instance, the hotel on Washington Street, didn't we approve, what, 20 or 30 rooms there for rental, I guess?
Uh, I think it was.
I mean, a place like that.
Manistee on Washington Street?
Yeah. Now, we approved 30 rooms there, there was in a washing, or laundromat, we approved five more. So I mean, we are trying.
Yeah, absolutely.
But do you have an idea how many we've approved?
How many you've approved?
Yeah, how many are online, like last, or today's paper, you, the Kennedy School, 200 they plan on, so, I mean.
We're making, we're making that headway.
Oh.
I mean, I, I can collect all that information and see where we are in the status of, since the 2019 survey. Yeah, I can do that.
Because we opened up the old, what, Jefferson School, wasn't there 20 apartments in there? Last spring or last fall, it just.
Hillcrest?
Or, is that Hillcrest?
Yeah, Old Washington School.
Earl Washington.
Yes, yeah.
There's another 20 that we opened up, so.
So we, we are making, I mean, they have made headway, and we are moving in that direction, yes.
Not enough.
But there's still, yeah, there still is.
Okay.
And as you heard a lot of people talk about, it's really attractive to have single-family units. So we do need to also be working in that arena, not just apartment rentals, too.
Well, with that regard, then do we have the property to build single-family units?
We do have some.
We are limited, as I.
And some of the things that we're looking at, I am working with the land bank. And so there is, we can do blight elimination, demolish some vacant properties. It's, it's a long procedure, but then that gives us the ability to open up potential of another housing unit, and work with developers to create that unit.
Okay, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Hopefully it'll work. No, thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
I know, I'm on the board at the senior center also. It's hard for a lot of these seniors because they have such a very low income. And if they could sell their house and move into something affordable, that would put a house on the market, you know.
Absolutely.
It's like a win-win solution. I know we are looking into putting in some senior housing and stuff. And it, it's a big, big thing for.
Absolutely, yeah, and that's one of those strategies, to have senior housing and have those units available for new families, starter families, to free up that stock. So I am working with the Council on Aging and their consultant on what their space looks like, and then what we can do in that space. So that is one of those things on my list of to-dos.
Okay, yeah.
Bob? Pam?
You said that the Housing Action Plan was from 2019?
Mm-hmm.
We've, I, we've since changed city managers and all that, so I'm assuming that you're working with Bill?
Oh, yes, absolutely, yeah, I.
Okay.
I work.
Any changes that he would like to make in that action plan?
I mean, if he, I'm, if you, he, I'm sure he would tell me if there's something that we, he's a part of the leadership team that steers what that plan looks like. My office is down the hall from Bill, so I.
No, I was just.
Yes.
I'd looked at it to update.
Yeah, and that's one of the things, so the housing, since I got here about three months ago, that's one of the things, we formed a core group of leadership team for that committee to really look at what are the priorities in this long-winded, multi-page plan? What are the realistic priorities? Where do you want to be? What has occurred already? Because there are some things that occurred, one of the things was having this position. And there was a survey that went out about housing, so some of those things have been checked off. But what, what still are the priorities, and what do we need to do? And one of the things that came out of that was senior housing was on the top of the list, as well as a couple other key things that I'm working hand-in-hand with Bill on.
Okay, thank you.
With our population, is the population seniorly, senior percentage-wise higher than normal, too?
It, it is, yes, yeah.
That's what I thought.
And I have the exact percentages, as well as most of, I think it's four, I can't remember the exact number, in the 40s and above is our average population here in Manistee County.
Yeah.
I think it's at 47.
Yeah, I, I can't, something, 47, 49, it was somewhere right around there, yeah.
The Kennedy School property, you mentioned that, Tracy, is, is there a developer?
The Kennedy School out in Parkdale?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make sure we're talking in the right place. There is a developer that is working with the Manistee Township on that. There, the township had passed some different zoning requirements that would allow them to come in. So I don't think that they have, they have their proposal in front of them yet, but it should be coming in shortly.
Are you part, are you part of that discussion?
Yes.
I know Fidler Township has.
The Hamlet?
The Hamlet, that's for housing. You know, here, here in the, in Manistee, we had, back in, I think, 14 or 15, we had a developer wanting to come in at the old Olson place, and unfortunately it was turned down. But is there any, anything on that? I mean, that was, that was a nice senior development, that would have been a plus for Manistee.
Yeah, so they moved to the space at St. Mary's Parkway. So that's the development that they're looking, they have, I forgot the acreage, but they have acreage next to the church, what was the church, St. Mary's Church, and then across the street. So I'm working with the Council on Aging and their consultants on what that space looks like, what we need to do. So they're still in those stages of not quite sure on how, what kind of building do they want? Do they want it to be cottages? What's that going to look like? Are they going to have some duplexes in there? They're, they're not, they're not there yet. But part of, some of the things that I'll bring then are making sure that people talk about incentives, or can they do a brownfield for their Phase 1 and Phase 2? And, you know, bringing some of those things and reminding people that here are some, there's some new legislation that passed with payment in lieu of taxes. And can that be an avenue? Or are they interested in it being affordable housing that they would use li-tech type of things for tax abatement? So working their way and helping people work their way through some of those things, too.
And we had that development in front of us a couple of years ago.
The Olsons project?
No, not the Olsons, but the Wagner Center property. Yeah. I mean, and unfortunately, I believe it was the Wagner.
Funding there.
Didn't have enough points or something.
Yeah.
Funding wasn't there.
Yeah, so that's why there are the alternatives and, and the new laws that have changed with, for payment in lieu of taxes, you don't have to be involved with MISTDA. But there are some other avenues that they could explore also. And, and part of, you know, we talk about we have all these projects potentially in the works, but if we can't get them across the finish line.
Right.
You know, that's not going to move us forward. We got to be able to move it across the finish line from making it as affordable and giving people tax abatements, or, you know, supporting them in whatever ways we can, so that we can make those things a reality and have those things happen.
You know how many units that are proposed?
For the Wagner?
Wagner Center?
No, I don't, they really are in still the formulation stages of that. They kind of went back to the drawing board on some of those things.
They weren't sure if they wanted to have two floors, one floor, and then across the street from the oil wells up to the playground there, that property there, to put more in there. But we'd like to have sidewalks that they can come in and access that accessibility from.
Absolutely, yes, yeah. Because there are different things with seniors that, you know, they really want to see happen. You know, sometime it, it's much harder for seniors to go up and down two flights, so they would all, you know, would they be all on one level, or? And if they're, because of the oil wells, that presents an additional barrier for us to work through. But we should be able to do that with some of the letters of support that we have and information, and going through the Brownfield Authority, so.
Well, we wish you the best with that.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Mark.
If you could share some of the information with Katie?
Absolutely, I'd love to do that.
Get it to, I appreciate it.
Yes, okay, great.
So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tracy.
Moving along, dumpster enclosure waiver requests, the first one is Muffler Man, 245 Arthur Street. So is the applicant here?
Yes, I do have a representative here, we have Angie with Muffler Man. Yes. And if you guys wanted to just step up to the podium and introduce yourselves. I did put, I don't know where my projector went here.
What's the matter?
I do have a map for you guys in your agenda packets, I'm not sure why the screen's not loading. There we go.
There you go, there you go.
And then I also received a letter from Muffler Man. Did I send this to you guys via email? Okay, I thought I did, but, so.
From the Public Services?
Or, I'm sorry, yes, from Republic Services, on behalf of Muffler Man, explaining some of the limitations that they have. As you know, as you guys know, going through this. As you know, as you guys know, going through this previously when we began dumpster enforcement over the summer, the zoning ordinance does not give me the authority to waive this requirement as a zoning administrator, but it does give the planning commission to waive this requirement if they see fit. So, um, yeah, I don't know if there's anything that you guys want to add or if you guys have any questions as it relates to the letter.
We've been trying to figure a different spot to put them dumpsters. They'd been there since eighty-seven.
Yeah.
It's just so hard of a curve, no matter where we put it, it's just not going to give enough room for the truck to come and dump it safely without getting out on the road.
Exactly.
And I got, I try to keep everything contained there. I got my metal dumpster and I got the paper dumpster and I got the tire pickup box that I stack the tires in to keep them all together there, I mean.
Well, from the letter, I read from your Republic people, isn't it a safety situation?
Correct.
So I mean, as long as, yeah, well, I wouldn't go against safety if they feel it's unsafe and I leave it as is.
Yeah, and, and the topography's working against them there, too, because everything drops off really steep behind there.
Yeah.
So they're, they're limited.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think.
So if I tried to move it anywhere else, it would might.
The trucks can't get in behind there.
Right, yeah, no, I don't have.
Even, even on the north side of the building, with the picture that we're looking at now where the white vehicle is.
Yeah, it's on the Republic letter.
Yeah, I, I know, but I just, you know, it's a tight fit. Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I got it from.
The curve goes, it's about the same distance on each side, so it's just.
Understood, understood.
And then if we put it over there, then we lose our parking, too, so it's just kind of.
Yeah, no, I'd say leave it as is.
Pam, you have any questions?
No, I think the letter and pictures from Republic were really very telling as to what can and cannot be done with it.
I mean, if we need to, we maybe put something along one side.
Oh, no, no, don't suggest it. Just be still. We'll get you what you want, but.
Are you speaking out of turn?
No, I just don't want the man to dig a hole, that's all.
Well, they'll hit water. They'll hit water if they dig a hole.
Yeah, they'll hit water.
Close to the highway and the drop off in the back, it's just kind of really.
Limited.
Yeah.
Very difficult lot.
Hard to get in and out of it, you know, just a person, too, not even a big truck like that.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to Republic and I talked to the driver and I'm like, what can we do, you know, and there's.
It's nothing.
Nothing.
Pretty much hands are tied right there.
All right, so what are we looking for, Marco? I'm ready.
Um, well, thank you. Thank you for coming up and answering the question. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate whatever you can do for us.
Okay.
Will you let us know what?
Yeah, we'll let you know in about ten minutes, probably.
You'll find out here shortly.
Shortly.
Um, so we need a motion on this to.
Approve.
To waive it.
Yes.
So is there a motion to waive?
I'll make a motion to waive it and let's move along.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Roger, second by Marlene, any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Uh, next, Tabernacle Seventy-seven, I almost said Hockey Street, but Hancock Street. Is there applicant here?
I'm not sure. Do we have a representative from the Tabernacle here? I spoke with him previously. I have not spoken with him as of this week, so if we don't have him here.
We, we can table it if there isn't a.
They're not here.
We'll get him on the agenda for next month.
Sure, there you go.
So, um, we need a motion to table. So is there a motion to table till, till we get a representative here?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Marlene, second?
Second.
Sorry to interrupt, Chair. In that motion, could I have specifically that it will be picked up at the next regularly scheduled meeting?
No.
That's something that was pointed out to me from the last meeting when we table. Um, it does need to be specific in the motion when that is to be picked up again.
Subject to the person being here.
Yes.
Yeah, we can put it on.
Yeah, because they have to be here, so.
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we table it to the next meeting.
Okay, March, whatever that is.
February, March, yeah.
March second, okay.
March second, correct.
We have a motion, second, discussion, none, please take roll.
Commissioner Solinsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Bob, sorry, yes. Okay, that is tableed till March second. Public hearing. Time now is, we're going to open the public hearing at seven thirty-five. Special land use request at 313 Maple, 311 Maple Street duplex. Is the applicant here?
Assuming so, yeah, sure.
You want that up?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Chad Whitman. I'm the owner of 311 and 313 Maple Street here in Manistee. The purpose for the special land use permit, as indicated in the package that was submitted, will be briefly gone through through a summary timeline of events. So early last year, contacted the zoning administrator for the potential to initiate a request for appeal to permit the construction of a new garage at the subject parcel and removal of the existing garage for reasons stated in that appeal package. As the presentation here shows, it's the existing site plan on the left showing the current configuration with the garage and not much use of the side yard with the proposed site plan. On the right being a fourteen-by-forty-six-foot garage that would be placed there to extend the backyard space. Uh, within doing that, there were several dimensional variances required for the lot, given the small substandard size. Uh, that request for zoning appeal was unanimously approved by the Board of Appeals, eight thirty, twenty-twenty-two. Following the passage of that appeal, a land use permit was not initially requested, given the timeframe on the project was to start in early spring of twenty-twenty-three and not assumed to be a critical aspect of building this garage. However, on or about eleven twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, I was advised by the zoning administrator that this would require a special land use permit, given the history of the property as a duplex itself, in addition to the request for appeal that was approved. So the fact that this property is a duplex had been communicated as such when the variance request was approved. And initially with the zoning administrator, with this additional amendment to the zoning R2, there was a thought that possibly a special land use would not be permitted. But however, as that turned out, we had to go forth for an individual special land use permit for this particular project. So the project itself, or the property itself, rather, is permitted by section for it as a duplex. That has been the case since, from what we can tell from the records, established back as early as nineteen-ten and nineteen-twenty. So with the modification of the site with this zoning board of approved, zoning board of appeals approved project for the garage, it does change the site somewhat. So henceforth, the reason for asking for this special land use permit to basically make everything copacetic with the duplex nature of the property and of course, this proposed garage as presented there. Given the historical records of the property, being used as a duplex for over a century, I currently live in the three-thirteen half of it. We don't anticipate any changes as required by the special land use permit and no expected impacts. If there's any questions pertaining to that, that is the reason for the request that we have here tonight for the special land use permit.
Okay.
Any questions?
A little confused. It's been used for the last hundred years as a duplex. You had it changed as far as the garage, or you could get more of a backyard, as I understand?
Yes.
Right? So now, what are you asking for?
Well, initially, as explained in the package, I was somewhat confused myself going to the zoning board of appeals to get approval for the garage. It's not changing any of the use of the site. There's already an accessory dwelling unit. I wasn't particularly keen on paying the additional fees for this meeting, obviously, but they get the project forward, obviously wanted to do everything as advised by the zoning administrator.
And I can add to that if you'd like. Um, so Section four oh eight of the zoning ordinance, which is what is included in the memo for you guys, indicates that non-conforming special uses are uses that previously existed as a permitted use or it could be even something that predates the zoning ordinance. I imagine this duplex probably predated any zoning in the city. But which, under this ordinance, are treated as special uses in the district which they are located, shall not be considered to be non-conforming. They are treated as a special use because that's what it's indicated. So this is the important part of this section. Provided, however, that any subsequent change, expansion, or adjustment to such use or its associated site shall be undertaken in compliance with this ordinance. So there are many non-conforming special uses throughout the city with longstanding businesses that, you know, have predated zoning, whether those are commercial, in this case, a residential property. And if and when they propose any changes to the property, whether it be physical or maybe adding a new accessory use, that initiates the special use permitting process. So it's really with this one, more so like a formality of the permitting process. It's not a new development. But then going forward, should Chad choose to make any changes or expansions to the property, that will be treated as an amendment to the special use permit and the zoning ordinance dictates whether that is, you know, lays regulation for minor versus major amendments for special use permits. For example, we had a minor special use permit amendment a couple months ago and the process wasn't as involved as initiating the special use permit, which requires the public hearing and the, the higher fee and such. So that's kind of where we're at with, with this specific development.
So as I understand it, because he moved his garage, or that's what brought it out to the.
Right, yeah.
Because he made a change?
Exactly. I can't permit it as an administrative permitted use because a duplex is a special use, even though this is, you know, kind of a straightforward residential garage.
Right, I see. Because you'd made a change, that's why you're here.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I understand now.
Sure.
What, what other changes are you planning?
The only changes anticipated are those related in the zoning board of appeals approved package, which is strictly the garage and reconfiguring the property as shown in the plot plan there. There's no other changes for the use of the property.
Right.
Good, Marlene?
What was the intent of, of changing the garage?
For more backyard.
You know.
So the, yeah, the, the summary level notes on the original zoning board of appeals request, the property itself or the parcel is a substandard as far as size and whatnot for duplex. And as shown on the plot plan, there's only so many options for having a accessory dwelling garage. Uh, right now, most, all of that, as shown there, is in permeable surface. So the intent really was to establish an accessory building or garage that had more use to it. The existing one, literally, you have to have, I have to have a string from the ceiling of it to line a car up precisely because it's so short. The other aspect, obviously, was to move the location of it to reclaim some of the backyard space as shown in the plot plan. And then additionally, as explained in the, the package, to permit the neighbors to basically have a better demarcation of these lot lines where we come into the corner there. As it's currently situated, you can't really effectively fence the properties together. And as in the zoning board of appeals package, both the adjacent property owners basically had supported this modification here for the garage itself, so.
Understood, I agree.
Did both those units have access to that driveway and garage?
Uh, right now, no. Only the three, the one on the right-hand side has access to the garage with the parking space for three-eleven being on the left there as shown.
Good, Marlene? Okay, Pam?
I, I see that the height of the building is going to be eighteen-eight. Is there, is there going to be upstairs to it or is?
There will be a storage loft area on the second level, just kind of given the constraints of the property. So that was to kind of leverage the height and get as much use out of the building as reasonably possible.
But strictly for storage, or?
Correct, it is strictly a storage loft and that is what's driving the height of it. And also to match the proportions of the existing structure.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
I got nothing.
Residents, sir.
Spent too much time talking with him on the phone.
All right, well, it's a, it's a nice addition to your, very nice, with the old garage taking that. Are you, is that going to be totally taken down? Are you saving a wall or anything with that?
No, it will be completely removed and sodded in its place with a.
Okay. And pouring new floo-, new floor, new foundations, everything?
Yeah, yeah, the new garage will have either trench or spread footings going down to the existing. That, this was kind of brought up with the zoning board of appeals package, but given the house itself is a hundred-and-twenty-two-year-old slab-on-grade, other options, we're going to try to minimize influence on that house's foundation by going down pretty deep with the footings and whatnot.
Last one is rain runoff. You know, we, we get this when the building is too close to the property lines. So will the garage have gutters?
Yes, uh, that is explained in the package for anticipated impacts. Uh, currently, the existing garage will not have gutters. This one will have gutters on the north and south side as per the ZBA package. And given the net increase in the permeable surface of the property itself, I don't foresee any negative impacts as far as stormwater runoff is concerned.
Okay, very good.
And the neighbors fine with this?
Uh, yes, you can pull the two letters of support there for the adjacent property owners.
Sure.
Let's see.
I guess I missed the gutters, so that's why.
Gutters or?
This was one letter of support here, signed by three ninety-two Fourth Street. And then we have one from three fifteen Maple Street.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
What about that building north of it?
We're cool with it.
I had to pick on you on that one.
Yeah, it was kind of funny, delivering ourselves the mailing, or the three-hundred-foot mailing.
Did you actually mail it to yourself?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, is there anyone in the public that has a comment on the proposal?
And Chair, if I may, I'm going to open it up to Heather real quick to see if anyone downstairs had a comment on this public hearing.
Yeah, that's true.
We do not have anything on the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Anyone? None? Discussion? Any further discussion on it? Bob?
Nope.
Pam? Marlene? Roger?
Not good, Les.
Seven forty-eight, we will close the public hearing.
Sure.
Move along to, uh, public comments on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium will go through the chair. Also, there will not be any interaction between the podium and audience. If these rules cannot be followed, the chair can terminate this portion of the meeting. The speaker at the podium has up to three minutes. So is there anyone in the public that has anything to say on the agenda tonight?
Chair, if I may, open it up to Heather one more time first. Heather, do we have any public comment on agenda-related items?
I do have one person down here. Um, do you have a comment?
I do on, um, old business. My name is Marvel Plamondon and I have thirty-plus years in selling real estate in Manistee. And my comment is regarding duplexes. I have always felt that the city was interested in improving and the value of property within the city. And I feel that a city full of duplexes will not improve, increase value of property. From my perspective, city, adding duplexes does not increase property value.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have down here. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, up here, is there anyone that has anything?
Are you ready? Okay. Seth Pratt, 355 Second Street, Manistee. First, I wanted to thank Ms. Davis for her presentation tonight. I would welcome the opportunity as an elected official to sit down with her and talk about housing. I feel like that's a very complex issue. And personally, as a city council member for the 5th District, I've had many conversations, and I feel there's so many components to that, that making one change isn't something that's going to greatly impact, because we have to consider blight and enforcement and things like that. When we're talking about projects, Manistee has seen a lot of projects changed recently, and right now, a lot of the concern comes to making those projects go to the finish line. We're seeing that with the Gateway Project. We've seen that the Hampton Project has changed. Those are things that when we're, as a community member, getting pitched the idea it's being sold one way, and then it's ending up a different way, and as elected officials and commissioners, I'm sure you're in the same position, we are the ones who have to answer for that, and we get questioned. And I understand in this turmoil time of economic challenges, because we're all seeing that with inflation and things like that, there are so many variables, so I get that projects have to change. But I guess my biggest concern is the data that's still being presented is from 2019. I work in the education field. I answer to the federal government and the state government. My data is constantly changing. I can't base my reports off of data from 2019. I personally reached out to Ms. Brown about this report. I've gotten a copy of it before I was even elected to council, and I guess I'm concerned how we're not doing progress monitoring on that. And I guess I'm glad, Mr. Yoder, that you brought that up. We've seen projects be approved in the county, so Manistee County housing needs have changed, but we're still saying we need this many houses. But we're not accounting for the things that have already been approved. And I guess my concern is, when we're looking at the developments, and there is a point base to that, I did talk to the architect who had been working on the senior citizen housing one, we get points based on location. So, it's, for example, nearest to a grocery store, nearest to hospital setting, things like that. So, sometimes I'm wondering if we're not picking out the best location, and we're working against ourselves. So, I'm wondering if we have the county that's taking on two projects right now, are we really wanting to say, let's open it up to duplexes? There's a system in place. Last council meeting or commission meeting, nobody had a problem with the system. I guess I'm asking, why are we looking for this change? Sometimes having some hoops to jump through is a great thing. If people aren't willing to jump through the hoop, maybe we don't want the project here. If you're wanting a duplex, you should be willing to go through the process. I wouldn't hire somebody if they're like, I want your job as a teacher, but I don't want to interview with you. I'm asking why we're not looking at that. When we're talking at school levels, there are so many things, but I have not had a teacher not apply for a job because of housing. I'll tell you what the number-one issue with teachers is. Nobody's going into the educational field. Central Michigan had one teacher in their program two years ago. They dissolved it for a little bit. There are so many factors. There, housing is one factor that everybody is feeling right now. I can tell you right now, if I was looking for a vacation home, I would have a hard time finding that. Years ago, I might not have. But it's supply and demand. So, are we going to put so much housing in the market that all of our property values go down? That's my largest investment. I'd like to retain my value of my property.
Well, that's just, I mean, we've got so much property.
So, I really hope that we consider keeping the process and asking people to honor the process that is in place. That's all. Thank you.
Please hold your applause, please. I ask. Thank you.
Applause. Hi.
I'm Liz Lasky, 537 Fourth Street, and I just want to give a little history. My folks, they moved here in 1954. My dad was offered a job at Hardy Salt. He took the job. He had three kids, and my mom was pregnant for me. He took that job and had no idea that there was a housing crisis in 1954 in Manistee. There was no place to move his family. They ended up taking, and they aren't like the condos today. They lived in Dune Wood Acres, which were little, one-bedroom, unheated cottage, which were nice for a week, but that's all he could find. They lived there two months. My mom started to go, I think, crazy. She didn't have a car out there. So, he moved into, onto First Street and lived in the Methodist parsonage there, which was all he could find. He rented it. Still looking for a house, because there was a housing shortage in Manistee in 1954. He found a basement on, there was a new subdivision, Browning Broad. It ended at Birch Street, off of A Street. He bought a basement. They moved into the basement. He had a contractor finish the upstairs. That's how Manistee was. There was jobs, and people were coming, and they were moving here for jobs. The jobs created a change in the housing industry, and soon there were many houses in Manistee. Never, never probably in Manistee has, other than the recession, has there been a surplus, though, of housing. So, I want to say we've added all these units, and I looked in the paper today, there's ads, like four different complexes that had housing availability. I listened to the report from Clint, and he said between 25% and 35% vacancy at Century Terrace. I mean, that's a lot. And now we're added 200 units, potential for 167. The Washington Project, I think you said, were 20. And I'm thinking, that's such, I mean, my dad didn't have that back then. There was nothing to choose from. So, I'm thinking, let's be careful which direction we want this town to go in. There is a delicate balance between affordable housing, between long-term rentals, short-term rentals, and we have to have each, or pretty soon you're only going to have one type. And then you have to make that decision. Is that what we really want? Is that's the best? And if we go down some roads, then who is left to pay the real estate taxes? It can't be all abated, and it can't be all affordable, because they're adding and using the services, and pretty soon there's nobody left to pay for these services. So, I think maybe we've made a lot of changes. Let's leave the process as it is. It's a small town. The neighbors still talk to each other. They want input. That if going in next to me is going to be a great change, I'd like to have a little bit of say in that. And it was like Mrs. Pratt said, there was a little discussion of a, in her neighborhood, and they're still all friends, they still all live there, but they were all given the opportunity to have input on that duplex. So, let's continue to allow it and leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ruth Pratt. I live at 463 Fourth Street, and I just wanted to point out, like, the young man who came today about his garage, that is a system that is not broken. It's what we've always had, and I believe that is the system that works. I am not for saying, let's change the whole town from point A to point B and have it all be one. You can build a garage in front of your house if you want, and anybody can have a duplex. I say, if you have an issue with your piece of property and you want to do something, the fair and logical way is to bring it before the board.
There you go.
And, like I said, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kate Gunderson. I've lived for over 36 years at 440 Cedar Street in Manistee, and you are, Planning Commission has been asked to make an amendment to the zoning, and that's why we're here tonight. I'm sure that Housing North's well-intentioned checklist is going to do some good for our community, but as Ms. Davis said, we don't have to do everything on her checklist to cause those good changes. And rather than have a blanket change, as has been described by changing R2 to include duplexes without special hearings, throughout all R2, it's been described as removing a barrier to housing. I think it's more a speed bump that slows us down, so we can consider what is best for the neighborhood. And we know that you have been responsible in the past considering these impacts, and we ask that you continue to do so as we go forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
I live at 501, or 504 First Street in Manistee. It's the nice one with the picket fence in front. And I got to tell you, I have been to countless church fairs, numerous county fairs, been probably to the state fair in Michigan, and Ohio, and in Mexico, probably 40, 50 times, even been to the New York World Fair, and I've never seen anything quite like this. You're talking about best, the speaker talked about best practices. How on earth is this even a best practice, that you talk about plunking your magic twanger and changing all of Manistee housing in one fell swoop? This is not a best practice. This is not the way to do things. You are a planning commission. You have a plan. Work the plan. When you work a plan, you do things. You plan, then you do something, and then you check, and you see if what you've done so far works. And then you act, and you change the plan, and you grow that way. You don't just plunk your magic twanger and change Manistee housing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. I think that's a good idea. Wait, wait.
Alyssa Lasky. I live at 505 Fourth Street. I wanted to comment on a portion of the meeting where housing needs were expressed using out-of-date data that was compiled more than four years ago. I just want to say thank you. I was really thankful to see commissioners bring up the tremendous amount of work that has taken place at the city level, at the county level, and as well as allude to the hundreds of spaces since 2019 that have been approved and either in the works or completed. For example, the 200 units at Kennedy, the potential for another, it was 160-some in Filer, and then two others that were talked about here. And I didn't have enough time to look in the newspaper for the others, but the 20 at Washington and five or so at the old laundromat. So, anyway, I'm, I was born and raised here. I came back, I'm a small-town kid. I came back after spending 15 years downstate. I had enough of that, chance to move back. And as somebody who has moved back, and I would love to never leave, I'm encouraged to see that you appear to be a commission dedicated to making decisions based on accurate, up-to-date information versus that compiled more than four years ago. I would also like to express, similar to the folks who have spoken, many, many folks who are here but won't be speaking, my, I'd like to express my support of keeping the current process in place that governs the special uses on R2s, and that includes duplexes. There's a prop, a process that was built with a purpose, and that purpose is important, and frankly, I think you all do a good job governing it. Let's keep it in place, as someone said, don't change what isn't broke. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Karen Mau of 536 Fourth Street, and I just wanted to say that I've heard this duplex issue be described as a way to increase density of housing in the city without fundamentally changing the character of the neighborhood, and I have to respectfully disagree. It will increase the street parking, doubling the amount of cars potentially for each duplex that is available. I don't see a lot of garages capable of handling that in duplex properties that I've seen. Increase traffic, and then with all those extra cars along the street, families with children like myself, inevitably, a Nerf dart, a ball, is going to go in the street, and kids darting in and out of those parked cars is, is just a hazard. And as a personal anecdote, I was in the housing market, my husband and I, less than two years ago, and there was a shortage of housing when we were looking as well, but we actually turned down a property which looked appealing to us online, but when we actually walked the neighborhood, we noticed that there were no less than two multifamily homes directly across the street from that property, and we decided to turn that down just based upon that and the extra street parking that we noticed. And I also have a third point. This change that you're looking at making is going to basically make it easier for builders to go ahead and create duplexes, but I would like clarification. I admit, I missed the first part of the meeting. Would that remove the community input aspect? Because it does, it does fundamentally change a neighborhood through that parking and traffic. And I would just like clarification before you vote tonight, if you're going to vote on that tonight. Does that remove the community input aspect if you do that blanket use zoning change? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Laura Kaser, and I live at 582 Eighth Street, right in the city. Last night, I had the opportunity to read part of the Manistee Committee, Part Planning Commission's master plan from 2016, and it begins, sorry, I don't see very well. It says, "The master plan represents the efforts of citizens, local and appointed officials, and reflects the community's deep concern to maintain the unique features, small-town charm, and historic character we have come to know as the City of Manistee. The plan illustrates a strong commitment to strengthen the quality of life for all residents and visitors alike. I ask that you remember the purpose of your committee and preserve the character of Manistee as we've come to know it." Thank you.
Good point.
Jeez. I'm John Veach, 485 Oxford Court. I want to compliment the people on the planning commission. You put in a lot of time. I couldn't do it. That's in the past for me. But anyway, I think what's encouraging is the way everybody addressed the issue at the last meeting, and you voted no against changing it, and I think that's a wise thing to do, because it's a permanent change in the community. And as Liz Lasky pointed out, these things do change, and our situation now could change. And I want to compliment Mick, who's not here. Two weeks ago, there was a community forum on housing, and it was packed, more people than are here, just people generally interested in housing. Their heart's in the right place. Yours are, everybody's is. We understand there's a housing problem throughout the country. This morning, on YouTube, I was watching how a fellow was presenting how real estate prices are precipitously dropping, and you folks are probably aware of this too, in other places. So, our situation could change. And the other question that I would have is, maybe housing is difficult for people to get into here in Manistee. How about surrounding areas outside of Manistee? Is it any easier there? Let's not make a permanent change to our community based on our contemporary issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, move along.
Move along.
Move to new business, special land use request, 313 and 311 Maple Street duplex.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Any further discussion on that? Is there a motion to approve or deny?
Bob? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, second. Motion by Roger to approve, second by Bob. Any further discussion? None? Please take your own.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Motion approved. Old Business, zoning amendment duplex as permitted use in R2. Any discussion, any further discussion from last month?
Yeah, well, with that, since you want discussion, and since it's been brought up, that we've got some housing in the works, I would kind of like to leave it as is and see just how the housing in the works turn out before we start making all kinds of changes and screw ourselves up. That's how I feel.
All right. Marlene?
I feel duplex is like having apartment in a rural, I mean, in a, you know, residential situation, and I'm not... And I'm not for that, and I just think we should leave our duplex as originally put in the planning.
Okay. Leave it as is. Pam?
I'm not a big fan of duplexes, especially in a resort town like we live in. I think it leads to more short-term rentals. So I'm not in favor of changing it. I would like to have, using the permitted use that we have now and asking their neighbors how they feel about it.
Bob?
The zoning that we have now is good on it. It puts the nice checks and balances in. So if people jump through the appropriate hooks with the hearings and everything else, and everything works in their favor, they'll get it. If it doesn't, they don't get it. That's the way that his ordinance is written. Let's keep it that way.
I agree with the commission. And like I stated last, last time, I couldn't allow the duplex.
So with that said, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do, the motion is to keep?
Keep as is.
Keep the zoning amendment as is.
And just to be specific, that would be a recommendation to city council?
To city council.
To not change the zoning ordinance.
Is that good? All right. Any, well, I need a motion. Marlene made the motion, second.
I'll make a motion.
Marlene made the motion, second by Roger. Further discussion?
Yeah.
None? Please take a rule.
Commissioner Slawinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes. Thank you. Now you can clap. Everybody happy now?
We actually would love more public comment at our public hearings. We never get activity like this.
We look out there nights and there's nobody there.
There's a basket by the door. Just leave a couple bucks.
Yes. Yeah, that's a truth.
Okay. Public comments and communication. Is there anyone that would like to have, have any comments on anything tonight?
And Chair, I will just open it up to Heather for this final public comment. Heather, do we have any final public comment down there?
We have no other comments down here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go ahead.
We already talked.
I'm on the zoning board of appeals, and we approved that project back in August. How come he is here today? I don't get it.
Chair, do you mind if I answer that question? It's, it's, the applicant applied. It's, you know, he applied for his variance and then came forward for his land use approval at this time, that, just the timeline that the applicant had come in. No, no reason, rhyme or reason, I would say. Yeah.
Anyone else?
My name is Robert Von Hebrock. I live on 345 Fourth Street. Our road is full of potholes. It got skipped probably long before I got here because all the other streets around me were all nice. And then you guys did, probably about a year and a half ago, fixed a lot of the sewer issues and stuff like that, which was awesome. And I was told by Mick that we were on the list to get our road redone, and I'm hoping that that's still on the books. I've called Jeff and I asked him to give me a call back, but I'm not getting any response. So, and that, and that's okay. Maybe he's trying to organize what he needs to talk to me about, which is, is great. But I don't have a curb anymore. It's that bad. So I don't know how many times people have run into my curb because it's a really thin street. And if I can make a small proposal, that'd be a one-way street and parking on only one side, that would alleviate the problem from widening, widening the road and maybe lessen the cost for the city to actually do the road and pave it. It's just a suggestion, but I think it might work if, you know, it was going from 31 up the hill one way so that it's not coming back down more traffic into 31. I don't know. I mean, you guys could work all that out. I'm sure. But it's really bad. Well, last year, I had a big hole. It was just sand, and it got bigger and bigger. And yeah, the city came out and put the new asphalt in it, but the edges all started chipping up because it's pushing down the other part of the old asphalt. So now that's chipping out. So it's just more concrete that I keep trying to throw into my trash can because I don't know what else to do with it. You know, so.
What street is this?
Fourth Street, the lower part of the Fourth Street from, up to Maple. Yeah, from 31 to Maple. And I'd love to see it done because our neighborhood, we have great people on our, our street. They're very neighborhood-oriented. They're, talk to each other. You know, it's, it's, it's really friendly. It's so great. And I'd love to see it get fixed up, especially with the street. Makes everybody feel, you know, worth more. So thank you for your time.
Well, with that, you can go on the city site. They have a, a street plan that's available. And with, with the street plan, it's always a moving target. When I was on council, they always moved. The street, street repairs always moved. But I think they probably would have, and Mick would, I wish Mick was here, but they would have an updated plan.
I thought they put the list.
They just put a list on, the new thing on the web, on their city website about things you can contact the city on. Unfortunately, Jeff's not here tonight. That was one of my questions.
Yeah, so if maybe somebody on your board can check into that?
Well, it's more on, it's more on council than anything.
All right. I appreciate it.
Take it to city councils.
Anyone else?
Hi, still Karen Mau, 536 Fourth Street. And if I can mention anything, I just wanted to say thank you for taking up the issue of accessory buildings on corner lots. We are a case in point. If you guys need an example to see how difficult it is to figure out where to place a detached garage on a corner lot, we're blessed with a wide double lot. And the, I guess, the lot we consider the side lot has nothing on it that's a non-conforming building that we want to tear down. But the problem is because of the ordinances, there's no real good place to put the garage. We can't put it on that entire extra lot that we have. So if you need a case in point of something to look at when you take that up in your special meeting next month, you, you could look at our property and see kind of what the issues are. And I, I did speak to one other person. I don't remember her address, but she's having a similar issue with a detached garage on a corner lot. So.
What is your address?
Katie, do we know this address?
536 Fourth Street.
Oh, another Fourth Street.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right.
None? Okay. We'll move along. Staff reports?
Yes, in your agenda packets, Nancy included your committee appointments, so that was just for your reference. And then I have some of the updates from the city manager to share with you guys. For rental, and this is just updates through January, the Safe Belt has been on it. Kevin has been on the rental inspections. And they're obviously trying to get everyone in compliance. Of the 402 inspections completed this year, 379 received their rental certification. So they've been making moves on that. Looks like there's Maple Road construction south of Manistee proposed. The Road Commission is eligible for the next Manistee Small Urban Task Force project. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but they've selected Maple Road from 12th Street to Murkey as their project. And they're going to be working on bids in the spring. Construction may begin in early May and must be completed in August of 2023. 602 Broad Avenue was a blighted house that has been demolished. I actually spoke with the neighboring property owners, and they intend to kind of split that lot between neighbors. So that's one more blighted property that's been eliminated in the city. The city recently obtained a mobile app that you can also go online. It's called See Click Fix, where residents can report things like potholes or things wrong with city infrastructure. There's a couple different, there's a couple different options on there for reporting complaints. So I think that that will be a really good tool to help the city streamline different complaints, and that's something that's available to the public. You guys probably know that Chief Cameron did retire, so the fire chief position was posted as of recent, the last week of January, and the application period will close March 1st. So those are just some city updates I had for you guys. And then with our RRC certification, I had sent out an email to everyone asking what training you guys had attended in 2022. I received response from Mark and Pam, but I haven't heard from anyone else. So just a reminder, if you guys could send me.
I can't find what I had.
Okay. He did the risk management, me and Mark.
Okay, sounds good. And really, anything that comes to mind that relates to, you know, your being on the commission, I think is worth including. It's just one of the, one of the tasks for our RRC to report on that training. So I'll include Bob with the risk management. And then I don't know if any of you know off the top of your head any other trainings. Marlene and Roger, if you've done any in the past year? No? Okay, that's fine, too. I'll just report that accordingly.
You didn't get any feedback on the webinar that I covered last month, those videos?
Yeah, you sent me that email. I'm going to put it on 2023, since we really did it in, in 2023. But yeah, you got them done. That's good. And you got your credits tracked. Yep.
That shoreline conference we had at the college, was that part of the training too?
I would include it. I mean, if you guys went to. Was it like a coastal resilience?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
That one.
Okay. All right, so Pam.
Also been sending us.
All kinds of stuff.
All kinds of stuff from that that we have to watch, too, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll include that one. There's no real, like, criteria on RRC for what type of training they're looking for. So I think, you know, the more the merrier. Let's fill up, show you guys have gone, what you've gone to.
They send us little webinars like every other month for the coastline resilience.
Okay, yeah. Cool, yeah. So if anything else comes to mind, just shoot it over to me in an email, and I'll make sure to include it in our 2022 report. And then lastly, I just have, as Karen had mentioned, we had discussed a work session regarding corner lot, accessory buildings on quarter lots, our last meeting. Nancy got in touch with the city, and March 16th, council chambers is not available, but we can do, because the March 16th is what you guys were discussing. We can do it in the county boardroom if you guys want to stick with that date. And then we also have the county boardroom open on March 9th, but we have council chambers open on March 9th, or April 13th are kind of the days we're thinking of. So I don't know if you guys want to stick in council chambers, maybe go with the 9th, or we can just stick with the 16th and go in the county boardroom. Up to you.
What, what are your feelings on going, staying here on March 9th?
Save your steps by going.
Yeah, I can do the 9th.
Marlene, you good? Roger?
I don't care.
Someone wants us to go.
Top button. Yep. And the next one.
Putting us in the dark. I guess we'll go with March 9th.
March 9th in the council chambers? 7:00 PM works for you guys?
Seven. Seven.
Seven.
Here, right?
Yep.
March 9th here, council chambers.
Seven.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Nancy, you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay. So you're going on vacation, huh?
I am.
Where are you going?
Aruba.
You better send us.
Chicago first.
You're gonna be there. You'll love it.
You taking clubs?
Do I have to come back? Can you call me?
No. There's no Zoom. There's no more Zoom.
And that is all I had for staff reports for you guys.
Have a good vacation. And move along to member discussion. Go with Roger.
Yeah, well, you know, I would wonder about that vacant property with that gateway. I know this sounds stupid, but what do you think if we made everybody park your cars there and used River Street as a walk? No cars on River Street.
How am I going to get the goodies? Huh?
You know, I mean, I've been watching a lot of westerns. You're going to town, you got to hang up your guns, you know? You come down Division Street or come into the highway, you got to park your car. From there, you walk.
I'm going to town with my scooter bungee cord, Jen.
Well, you can use, yeah, you can use that. Other than that, nothing. No, nothing, Marco. I'm good.
Frankfurt has that little bus. They have parking lots, street or two out of town, and they bus you right uptown if you can't find a parking place.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, in the summertime especially. Everybody's drinking anyhow. You can rate the River Street's wide open.
Social district, yeah.
No, I'm good, Mark.
I got nothing.
To follow up on what Roger said, somebody suggested if the tribe would let food trucks go in there, like on the weekends and stuff.
Oh, there you go. That's a thought. Yeah, I don't know, but.
I thought maybe having the farmer's market there to keep it in the downtown area.
Yeah, that's a thought, too.
They give them more room than the parking lot over there.
More accessible, right out in the open.
Yeah.
Just my two cents.
Oh, hey, Marco? How about that new housing commissioner person? How about the lady that took over? Could we have her step up one in eight months?
Yeah, we could.
Where did she come from?
I don't know.
I don't need it. She's running the.
Oh, the deputy housing commission? I did read about that.
Well, it was in a paper. That one fellow went on.
Could you possibly reach out to her for April? Because March, we have.
Went on a medical leave.
Potentially Jeff McCula as well in March.
I mean, where are these people coming from, you know?
And what I have is I reached out to Ken Armour over 1,009 Manistee Street. He agreed to give us a tour in March.
Yes.
So, you know, everybody want to go through? Because they're, they're studying it up now.
Oh, okay.
So we'll get to see some progress. So you want to reach out to Ken?
Yes, I can coordinate that with Ken. I actually did meet with him earlier this week, and he had let me know that that was something that you guys were interested in, so we can get some definitive dates and, yeah, get you guys out there for a tour. And I also reached out to Tom Welling for final tours of the lake shore, and he was, you know, he's always happy to do that. So he was thinking April would be best when, you know, get it right before it's open. They're supposed to have a couple rooms done.
Okay. Yeah, that'll work. Thank you. So, so next month, we'll have Mark Miller and Jeff McCula. Really, you know, like to get Chief Glass in for, you know, the blight issues. And I know I mentioned this last time, the old Ringo Oil Company on First Street, we bought a blight. I mean. So is, is that actually on First or is that on River?
It's on First Street.
First Street, okay.
It's got a First Street address.
So that, it's, it looks bad and looks bad for our community.
Is, is that?
No, no, that's Ringo, old Ringo Oil Company.
Yeah.
So now it's just cold storage.
Yeah, the old army surplus is long gone.
Windows are broken and siding's falling off and.
Is that something you'd like me to inquire with the blight officer for that district on and see if there's any motion?
Please.
Yeah, okay.
So with that, that's all I have. I want to thank everyone for staying and comments. And you're clapping, so that's great. So with that, it is 8:29, and I take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a.
Motion. Agreed.